City Planning Commission Meeting of Wednesday, March 2nd, 2011. Begin with Pledge of Allegiance if I get everybody to stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. Robert, may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Kevin Weiskie.
Present.
Jason Wusley.
Here.
Max Haltem.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Patty Egan.
Here.
Jim Newberg.
Here.
Dennis Romeo. You do have a call, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes. We have three different sets of meeting minutes. We want to deal with them all individually so that anybody that needs to abstain can abstain. I will start with February 2nd, 2011. Are there any changes and/or a motion, please?
I move to approve Commissioner Kaufman.
Have a motion from Commissioner Kaufman.
Second from Commissioner Haltem.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody abstain? Motion carries unanimously. Next is regular meeting and workshop meeting of February 11th, 2011. Any corrections to the meeting minutes? Motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from Commissioner Kaufman, second.
Second.
Commissioner Egan has a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? None, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, before you move off of this topic.
Yes, sir.
The regular meeting and the workshop were both held on February 2nd. Was that the intent of the first motion was to approve both sets of a February 2nd meeting?
Yes, excuse me, Robert. I did say February 11th and I meant second. Thank you. Okay, the February 11th, 2011 special meeting. Do we have any corrections to the meeting minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Kaufman has a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Wusley, I'll second.
Commissioner Wusley has a second. Any changes, corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? None, motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is City Council Liaison Reports. Have none. Next is Acceptance of the City of Reno Planning Progress and Priorities Report. Do we have staff that would like to talk?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission accept this report and forward it on to the City Council and Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nathan. Commissioners, any comments, discussion? Motion?
Chair Weiskie.
Commissioner Newberg, is your mic on?
Yeah, it is in.
Thank you.
I move to accept the City of Reno Planning Progress and Priorities Report.
I have a motion from Commissioner Newberg.
Commissioner Haltem, I second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda this evening is public comment. Public comment is limited to no more than three minutes on items that do not appear on the agenda and/or items for which no public comment period was afforded. The public may comment upon agenda items by submitting a request to speak form to the clerk who is seated at my right, at the very end, at the time of the meeting or during the meeting. Robert, do we have any requests to speak forms?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anybody here in the audience this evening who has not filled out a request to speak form who wishes to speak? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment. Next on our agenda is item number seven, time extensions. LDC 06-00318, Damani Ranch Villages 3C, 4, 5, and 6. Will the applicant's representative please come forward and introduce himself?
Good evening. Gabriel Whitler with Odyssey Engineering, representing TD Damani LLC. Requesting a one-year time extension to tentative map for Damani 3C, 4, 5, and 6. Unfortunately, sign of the times, we just need to extend the map one more year and we are diligently working towards the next phase of the final map, though. And we anticipate that hopefully coming in fairly soon, so... But at this time, we need to extend it one more year to keep the tentative approval alive.
Thank you, Gabriel. Staff?
Good evening. Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is similar to a number of time extensions you've seen over the last several months. Staff is in support and it's consistent with state law as far as the timing goes. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Vern. Okay, any public comment? Robert? Okay, I will close public comment on this item. Bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion and/or a motion.
Chairman Weiskie.
Commissioner Newberg.
In the case of LDC 06-00318, Damani Ranch Villages 3C, 4, 5, and 6, I move to approve one-year time extension on Damani Ranch Villages 3C, 4, 5, and 6, tentative map, subject to the existing conditions.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Newberg. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Egan, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Egan. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next on this evening's agenda, number eight, under unfinished business and public hearings. Claudia, we have, it's my understanding that we have a couple of agenda items which need to be continued. Is that correct?
Item number, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. Item number eight, Ranchera PUD. They've requested a one-month extension.
Okay. Is that a continuation or just a postponement?
That would be to time certain for the April meeting, which is...
So we have not opened this...
April 6th.
Yet, from what I remember, my recall?
This was, this was re-noticed for this meeting because they have amended the area.
Okay, so my question then, Marilyn, do we need to open this and take a motion for continuance?
Yes, please.
Okay. At this time, I'll explain to the audience what we're doing on this agenda item. What we're going to do is change our agenda around for just a second. Under public hearings, which is item nine on our agenda, item number eight, which is Ranchera PUD amendment, we are going to open this agenda item right now and then if there's anybody here who wishes to speak under public comment, we will listen to that public comment and take your hearing at this time and then a motion for continuation as requested by the applicant. So if anybody wants to speak tonight, you can. You can speak tonight and you can speak next month when it's re-agendized if you'd like. With that, I will open LDC 11-00027, Ranchera PUD. If the applicant's representative will come forward and before introducing himself, I would just like to make a quick statement that our Planning Commission discussions and decisions are made on findings and do not include considerations of CCNRs. So just so anybody knows, I just want to make that clear for this evening. Thank you. The applicant's representative introduce himself for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, my name is Garrett Gordon with the Law Firm of Lewis and Roca, representing John Hera and Middle Fork Limited Development. I'm hopeful that third time's a charm. We've continued it twice. We've had the neighbors out on numerous site visits. We've made changes to the plans over the last 60 days and I think this last 30 days will hopefully get us over the finish line. We have a meeting with neighbors next week and we'll continue to try to change the plan and mitigate some of their concerns, but I do have a commitment from the neighbor's representative that they will agree that no matter what, we are going forward in April. I hope I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Garrett. At this time, staff, I'm going to bypass you and go straight to opening up public comment. I have a request to speak form from Stephen Mala. Stephen, if you would like to have your three minutes at this time, I will give it to you. If you'd like to postpone, that's your choice.
Okay, thank you. Stephen Mala is representing Bill Present. We're the group of the neighbors that have been in discussions with the applicant and we're, we consent to the continuance of this matter till the next hearing and we've been working together and there is a meeting next week on it to discuss matters that hopefully will resolve it and come to some agreement.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I will ask for any other public comment? Is there anyone else here this evening who wishes to speak under public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for a motion of continuation. Commissioner Romeo.
Mr. Chairman, case of LDC 11-00027, I move to continue this item to the April 6th, 2011 meeting.
It's April 7th. It's on a Thursday next month.
April 7th, 2011 meeting.
Okay, I have a motion for April 7th for next month by Commissioner Romeo. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Haltem, I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Haltem. With that, I will ask for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will see you all next month. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, bring it back then for unfinished business. Item number one is LDC 10-00051, Bella Vista Ranch, Phase 2. The applicant's representative will please come forward and introduce himself, describe his project to us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, for the record, Randy Walter of Places Consulting. I'm here representing Cronosyan LLC on this application. We've requested a continuance of this for hopefully the third and last time. We're waiting for the coverage survey that's being put together by the fire department. Hopefully that study will be completed so we can actually resolve the whole fire station issue for southeast Reno between now and our next meeting. So with that, I'd request a continuance and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, with that, I will pass on staff again and open up public comment. At this time, I have one request to speak form from Kim Rodmeyer. Kim, if you'd like to come up and speak or if you would like to pass and wait till next month?
Hello again. My name is Kim Rodmeyer. I will be back next month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience also. With that, I will... Robert, is there any other, any other requests to speak forms?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience this evening who wishes to speak on this agendized item? Hearing and seeing none, I close public comment. Bring it back to the Commission for a motion of continuation. Commissioner Romeo.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of LDC 10-00051, Bella Vista Ranch, I move to continue this item until April 7th, 2011.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Haltem. Thank you, Chair. I motioned to second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. See you all next month. Next on unfinished business is LDC 11-00023, Royal Liquor and Smoke. If the applicant's representative will please come forward, you'll have 15 minutes. Oh, wait a minute, before you start, Mike. I'd like to go ahead and do disclosures at this time. Any commissioners with disclosures? Commissioner Romeo?
I have had a conversation with the applicant's representative and I did make a site visit to the facility.
Okay. At this time, I've done the same thing, had a discussion with the applicant's representative and visited the site. Any other disclosures? No? Okay. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, for the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group, here on behalf of Royal Liquor and Smoke. The store owners are also with me tonight. I'm Anand Sivender Singh. As you recall, this project was before you in January and unfortunately due to the holidays, we weren't able to make it to the NAB in December and we had some, some people here in opposition that we weren't aware of. So we continued to allow us to go back to the NAB. We did present this to the Neighborhood Advisory Board in February. They were very receptive to it and we had received some very positive comments that I think are included in your, in your staff report. Also, we have met with Erin Ricchio from the Ribero Companies who came and spoke last time against our project and she really had four major concerns. One was the sale of water pipes, bongs, those sort of drug paraphernalia type things in the store. Requested that a trash can with a, like an ashtray receptacle be installed at the front door of the store. Concerns over signage and then concerns over the CCNRs. And if you look in your packets, we've come up with two voluntary conditions. The first condition, which is condition number three, would prohibit the sale of drug paraphernalia, you know, such as water pipes, glass pipes, and the like, from the store inventory. And we actually have a slight amendment to this condition to kind of make it even stronger and that would be on the second sentence, specialty tobacco products, including hookah pipes, shall be located and displayed in an area which they are inaccessible to minors and then add to that sentence and prohibits viewing by minors. So as you recall, this special use permit is to allow for an existing liquor and specialty tobacco store that's permitted to go to a convenience store. It's because we're, we're requesting that more than 51% of the floor area be dedicated to food and everyday grocery type items, therefore where the special use permit kicks in. So because it's going to be more of a neighborhood store, neighborhood market type thing, we, we felt that adding that condition that the drug paraphernalia and that any, anything that's really not your standard typical mass-produced tobacco product be screened from the view of minors. Also, condition number five regarding the trash receptacle, that's a direct result from our meeting with Erin and in fact, that trash receptacle has already been installed. So in terms of the signage, Erin, when we met with her, had some, some concerns and I'm going to put a picture up here. And I apologize for the, the quality on that, but that picture was taken back in November.
Can we dim the lights, please, a little bit, Robert?
And it's hard to tell, but if you look in the, in the window there, there's actually bars in all the windows in addition to the banner that's hanging from the, the awning and whatnot. The, all the banners have been removed. They've worked on really eliminating a lot of the window signage. It comes down to a CCNR issue, which has to be handled separately from this proceeding, but we are agreeable that all signs will conform with, with Reno code. And then in terms of the CCNRs, that's going to be up to the store owners and the property owner to work with Ribero to, you know, on a separate issue. So I have a picture. That picture was taken in, in November. This picture was taken today. As you see, all the bars have been removed from the windows. The signage has been greatly reduced. That's that same elevation. Obviously, when we took the picture in November, we didn't realize we had an issue, so I would have taken a better picture, but the amount of signage has been drastically reduced. The bars have all come down. The bars took a little bit longer because there was liquor displays in front of them, so that took a while to get the liquor moved around and get those taken down, but that has occurred. We, we're not asking for any change in our hours of operation. We're not asking for 24-hour use, so we'll stick within the standard operational hours. And last time we were here, there was, there's two special use permit findings that were discussed and the first was finding A, that the proposed use is compatible with the existing surrounding land uses and development. And we think that really that by going to a convenience store, by adding these conditions in terms of what the store carries, making these changes, we really are becoming more compatible with the neighborhood and that this special use permit actually puts a greater level of control over what the store can and can't sell and how really the city regulates it. It puts a lot more teeth in terms of them sticking to the operational standards. And the last finding was project, or excuse me, finding G, project signage is in character with the project architecture and is compatible with or complimentary to surrounding uses. And once again, I can see, as you can see, we've, we've already made steps to change that. We're agreeable to the conditions that all signs must meet code and, you know, there are CCNRs to, just to deal with, with those issues. They are separate from this request, but those will be worked out in this, in a separate fashion. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have and...
Mike, thank you.
You bet.
Staff?
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. Staff has reviewed the proposed conditions, voluntary conditions, and we're in support of that.
Including the modification this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I will open up public comment for this agenda item. I have one request to speak form before me right now. Leslie Flint, if you will please come to the podium and introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
My name is Leslie Flint. I live in the neighborhood of Royal. I see no reason why there shouldn't be more of a convenience in there as far as food and everything. The Singh family is, does a very good job with their store. My children shop in there. We shop in there. I live just down the street from Sclary's and Jackson Food Mark and I actually do go out of my way to go to Royal because they, it's more of a family environment. There's, and the products are cheaper and I'm just here to say that I do support this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Looks like we might have one more request to speak on this agenda item. Dennis Hunter? You'll have three minutes. If you'll introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, my name is Dennis Hunter and actually I'd like to take a couple of minutes and just make a statement outside of this is that my father is over 40 years, a retired planning director and also county planning director, so I'm pretty familiar with all this stuff. It's just kind of strange I'm standing in front of you guys right now. But anyhow, my comment is on this. I've known this gentleman since prior to him opening and he's talked to me and bounced a lot of things off of me, ideas on what would work in the area, because I had made some comments to him that there's a lot of children around the area that are going to come in. He's in a good location as far as for, there's handicap people in the apartment complex across the way. They are walking and it's kind of a really nice thing that they can walk a very short distance to pick up a loaf of bread, a gallon of milk, or whatever their, their children may need for that evening or that next day, for instance, okay? Instead of having to go all the way down to Raely's. That complex has been empty for a long time and I've been here in this area since they built it. And this evening, actually, we took a picture, some graffiti from the kids taking paint and painting the windows, okay? When you have a complex that's empty for a long period of time, the kids figure, well, there's no one here to see us and so they take advantage of it. Unfortunately, it happens. We can't control it, but the last thing that we need over in that area is that kind of stuff happening. It's going to decrease the property value and as we all know, if we have a full marketing spot there, whatever may be in that area, it's only going to help the property value on the owners that are in that area. Savvy's conformed to a lot of things. I've watched him from, they call it the, I don't know, the marijuana pipes or whatever. I mean, it's used for a lot of different things. He did knock them off and he, he did make a comment to me one day about it and I said, Savvy, you're in an area where it's middle to upper class, you've got older, younger, you really don't need this. What you need is to cater to the people that are in the area and, and give them something that they feel comfortable walking in your store and not only that, they feel comfortable allowing their children to walk in your store. I have not since he's opened seen any signage that's offensive. He advertises products. Well, if you sell Budweiser or you sell whoever, they're going to give you signs to advertise their products and you're going, as a store, every store is going to advertise the products that they represent because everybody has a different idea of what they need. And I feel Savvy's done a really good job. He's, they're very polite. Everybody that's ever worked for him has been very polite. They're polite with the children and I don't see anything offensive in that store that should affect anybody and myself. I'm in my 50s, so I may see things a little bit differently, but I think he's done a wonderful job for our area and I'm glad to have him there and it's a nice convenience for us and the people that are in our area.
Dennis, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak this evening who hasn't filled out a request to speak form? If you will please introduce yourself at the podium and when you get done, over to my right is forums, if you'd fill one out for us, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maureen.
Yes, go ahead, Maureen.
Yes, I live in a, a complex right by the store here and I was really happy to find out that we, that store was open because I had a stroke a couple of years ago and I was on a walker. Once I start, got off my walker, I could kind of get on a bus and I would have to go just to get a cat food or whatever and to have them move in this year was just a really good thing for me. They've been really good to me and it's nice to have them in the area that you could just not have to walk far, not be scared because you're by yourself and just go right. Actually, we have a shortcut through our little place that they walk, that they took out a bar in the gate that you can get to the store and they've been just a really good family, really good to my granddaughter, you know? They had a party when they opened. They've just, I hope that they, they're going to be here for a long time.
Thank you very much.
Because for me, you know, just to be able to go over there and just have somewhere to go and have a friendly face, it's just, it'd be a shame that if they ever left. I just love them and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And please don't forget, over this way, Maureen, you got to fill out that paperwork for me.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening who has not filled out a request to speak form who would like to speak on this agenda? Yes, sir, see you in the back room? Come on forward, introduce yourself and then please go fill out the paperwork after you get done. You'll have three minutes.
Three minutes, it won't take long. My name's Kevin Massey. Pleasure to be here this evening. It's an awesome addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Your conditions have all been met. Savvy and I have spoken tons of times about the additions he should make to his store, what should be taken out of the store. The glasswares were always an issue with me for the reason because when the glasswares, the pipes, so to speak, were there, I saw an additional amount of younger people hanging around the area. Now that they're gone, they're just not hanging around anymore, you know? They're not soliciting that kind of thing and that's great addition. It's awesome for the neighborhood, awesome. Like she was just speaking about and like Dennis was speaking about, it's right across the street. I live in the same apartment complex as she does. It's great, you know? If I need to clean them up, bam, I'm there. And I just think it's an awesome addition to the neighborhood and I wish you well. It's a great place to be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else this evening? Yes, come on forward, introduce yourself, make sure you fill out the paperwork afterwards, please.
Hi, my name is Anand. I'm one of the owners and I don't want to say much. I just wanted to let you guys know we did make a lot of changes and if anybody else has any concerns, we're willing to work with the city and make any changes that's necessary. And I also have, we started a petition at the store for people that live in the neighborhood and I have about 80 signatures here from people that live around the area there, all supporting this. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. If you want to leave those with Robert, you can.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Nope? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for discussion, comments. Commissioner Kaufman, questions?
Mr. Commissioner, I think there's one other person to speak that's filling out
Mr. Chair, he's going to fill out a form, but he's not going to speak.
Okay, just fill out a form and not speak. Okay, when you get it, we'll read it in. Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Romeo, you had questions?
Well, I don't have questions, but I, I'll start the discussion.
Okay.
Since I think I was the one that caused this to be, be delayed for a month, I did have some concerns at the time. With the work that's been done in the past month, the modified conditions, the positive response from the NAB, I really like the fact that they went back to the NAB. I'm kind of a stickler on that. I like it going back to the Neighborhood Advisory Boards for comments and I'm confident that the special use permit will add an extra level... And I'm confident that the special use permit will add an extra level of control in this. And they seem willing to work with the city. Since we cannot deal with CC and ours at this board, I'm in a position now where I can support it. And if need be, I will make the appropriate motion when the time comes.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. Any other conversation? Commissioner Woosley?
Thank you, Chair. I would have to echo Commissioner Romeo's thoughts. I think last last time we had a lot of questions, and they did a lot of hard work to to work with the conditions, with the community, with the NAB. And it definitely makes things a lot clearer and probably a lot easier to make the decision night. So I can support this project as is.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Marilyn.
I wanted to draw to your attention. It's on.
Robert, can you turn up her mic just a little bit, please?
That drug paraphernalia, or at least objects commonly used in drug paraphernalia, are defined in our code. And if you wanted a greater definition of, how do they put it? Commonly used drug paraphernalia that is available to you if they are willing to include that in their voluntary condition. And I have just taken a moment and shown that to their representative. He may want to look at it again.
Okay.
Just to be comfortable with it.
Mike?
For the record, I did look at it, and we're fine with that. I looked through, and I got to admit, there was four or five things. I wasn't even sure what they were, but.
That's a good thing, Mike.
But yeah, it's exactly what we had envisioned. So, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
And then and then in that case, that is Reno Municipal Code, Chapter Eight, Section Seventeen, oh, one, oh, subsection eleven.
Okay, so it's Chapter Eight, Section Seventeen, oh, one, subsection eleven?
Oh, one, oh, subsection eleven.
Oh, one, oh, subsection eleven. And we can state it that way in our motion if we so choose to add it.
If you choose to do that, as long as they are including it in their voluntary condition.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion by anyone? Okay, I'm going to end discussion then by saying I was in the store Monday afternoon and was very pleased to go up there and do my research, be looking for specific items that were of major discussion during the last hearing, and to find that the owner had done an extremely good job of cleaning up, clearing out several items. And it and it made me feel more comfortable with their application and and the future good neighbor that this community may be receiving. Before I ask for a motion, I would just like to read into the meeting minutes. I got one final request to speak for him from a John Patterson who does not wish to make a statement, but he has written, "It has been a blessing not having to cross a cross a busy intersection to get a loaf of bread, et cetera." And John is in favor of the project before us right now. So in the meeting minutes. Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Romeo?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of LDC one, one dash zero, 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 two, three, Royal Liquor and Smoke, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, including modification of conditions three and the addition of condition five with the reference on condition three to Chapter Eight, Section Seventeen slash zero, one, zero, subsection eleven. I can make the findings.
And with the additional change to three that the applicant stated?
Yeah, the modified condition three.
Would you read that into the?
As I see modified condition three now reads, "Items commonly used as drug paraphernalia, such as water pipes, glass pipes, and the like applicant applicant please define which we have done in this subsection, shall be prohibited from the store inventory. Especially tobacco products, including hookah pipes, shall be located and prohibited by viewing by minors. Adult movies, videos shall be prohibited from this shall also be prohibited from the store inventory. Adult magazines and books shall be kept behind the counter and covered in a manner that prevents viewing by minors."
Thank you. And Robert, we have that written down. We'll give it to you. Yes.
And does that correspond with what you've agreed to, Mike?
Mike, would you please come up to the podium and?
Yes, it does.
So the conditions, the modified conditions that we have just read in and added to the applicant is in acceptance of those?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion?
We need a second.
We're looking for a second. Commissioner Kaufman?
I'll second that motion, and I can also make all the findings.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on our agenda is item nine, Public Hearings, item number one, LDC one, one dash zero, 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 four, three, Silver Peak Apartments. Will the applicant's representative please come forward and introduce herself?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. I have Greg Peak with me tonight, who's the owner of the property. This project is located north of the Lemon Drive Military Road intersection, and it's on both sides, east and west side of Military Road. This project was approved in September two thousand eight, and it was approved for a special use permit for four hundred and twenty unit apartment complex, cuts and fills, and creation of a drainage way to alleviate flooding. Project was approved with thirty-four conditions. Number two and three establish timeframes to obtain the building permits. And that's what we're before you tonight to extend those timeframes due to the current economic conditions. The Peaks have not been able to move forward on this, but they have spent a lot of money and effort on engineering and architectural plans that they want to move forward on when the time is right to build an apartment complex on a drainage channel. Staff has crafted the new conditions, basically allowing for an additional five-year timeframe. And we're we concur with staff's recommendation. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, staff, please. Vern?
Very enclosed, Senior Planner. This request is very similar to other special use permits that you've recently seen and the council have seen. The timeframes are consistent with that. So we've recommended approval as as written in the staff report. Also, I received approximately three calls and one walk-in, and it was just informational only. They had no concerns with the project. It's wanting to know what was going on. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Vern. With that, I will open public comment. Robert, do we have any requests to speak for him?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience this evening who wishes to speak under this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak for him? Hearing and seeing none, I close public comment. Bring it back to the Commission for a motion or discussion. Commissioner Woosley?
Chair Wieske. To propose a motion, based on the compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the amendments to condition numbers two and three for LDC zero, nine dash zero, 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 two, three, Silver Peak Apartments, as written in this memo. And I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Egan?
I have a second.
Can you make the findings?
I can make the findings.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda this evening, item number two, LDC one, one dash zero, 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 four, five, four, nine, nine, seven, Longley Lane Variants. Will the applicant's representative please come forward and introduce himself? You have fifteen minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, Andy Durling with Wood Rogers, representing the project applicant, the Regional Transportation Commission. Before you tonight, we have a variance request, which is to reduce the amount of overall landscaping for the project site from fifteen percent to just approximately eleven point two percent. Project site is located on the corner, the northwest corner of Longley and South McCarran, and was previously developed in the late nineteen eighties under the industrial commercial or IC zoning district. Under that zoning district, the landscaping requirement is for the front yard to be fully landscaped. The site in recent years was was rezoned to arterial commercial, and the AC zone requires fifteen percent. Currently, the site has approximately just around just over twelve percent of the site is landscaped. At this time, the RTC is planning a widening project of southeast McCarran, which includes the addition of a southbound right turn lane and sidewalk that is currently not provided on Longley Lane. In order to do this, they must eliminate some of the landscaping that is on that corner of Longley and and McCarran, all but approximately three feet of it. To mitigate some of the landscaping in the front yard, they they're proposing to add an additional seven feet to bring up a total of ten ten-foot landscaped parking lot edge, which will eliminate approximately five parallel parking spaces. Looking at the entire site as it is currently completely developed, there are not other opportunities to add additional landscaping unless additional parking were eliminated, which would then put the site into another nonconformance for their parking. With that, I will conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, thank you. Staff?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. We've received one call in support of this variance and one inquiry. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the variance with a change to condition two. Because this is dealing with right-of-way, condition two, should the planning commission recommend an approval or adopt an approval, should be changed a building permit should be changed to encroachment permit. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay. With that, I will open up public comment. Robert, do we have any requests to speak for him on this item?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to speak under this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak for him? Hearing and seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for questions. Commissioner Romeo?
I see the this item was scheduled for the February twenty-fourth Ward Three Neighborhood Advisory Board meeting. I don't see any comments on our packet. Is there a reason?
We just received them today.
Okay.
Can you would you like him to give us a brief overview of what comments?
At least cursory, I.
Sure.
Well, we do have a member of the Ward Three Neighborhood Advisory Board here. Perhaps she could comment on.
That's up to you, Commissioner Romeo.
Kim, would you like to come up and just give give us an overview as to what was presented at the NAB?
Good evening. Kim Roodmeyer. Basically, the discussion entailed, they weren't happy with losing the landscape for that for that particular section. Most of the people, we didn't do a lot of commenting on it. The person who came and presented it was not the person who came, it wasn't her project. She she was doing it for somebody else. Basically, there's I have there was problems with losing the parking spaces, the five parking spaces. One of the things that was a great concern was the three feet of landscaping that they were going to do was going to be rock. And and the entire rest of the property is grass. That was it was going to be various sized rock. But majority of the comments were they wanted to help the existing property owners because they are having no choice here. A lot of comments along those lines. Do you want me to go through some of these things?
Would you say it was positive?
It was more like resigned. There wasn't a lot of positive comments made. It was more like there really wasn't a lot of choice.
Well, at least we should have the comments for the record. Because I've since they went to the NAB and the NAB did spend time on it, I would like to at least see their comments included as part of the record. Can you hear it?
Okay.
Most of these were losing the parking and the way the landscape was going to be was going to look.
Okay. And my comment, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
My comment is I would like to at least have the NAB comments included in the rec in in the record of this of the public hearing.
Commissioner Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. We could read them into the record if you'd like, or we could?
Well, I don't think that's necessary. We've had an overview, so.
As long as they're attached, please.
We certainly have them attached and can make copies for the commissioners.
Thanks, Nathan.
Now, before I say that and make final decision, are there any commissioners who would like to take a minute to read any of these comments? Or was the overview that we just received sufficient? Okay, I'm getting some head shaking, yes. So we're on the right path with just attaching them, Nathan?
Okay.
Will be sufficient. Thank you. Any further questions, Commissioner Romeo? Okay. Any other questions? Nathan? I have a question for you, please. In the staff report, it says that in two thousand and ten, we, the planning commission, approved a zone change from IC to AC.
That's correct.
And in doing so, that's when this this landscaping issue was brought into nonconformance, correct?
Correct. There's almost sort of an anomaly in code with the the IC zoning district or industrial zoning districts in general allow for front landscaping to be in a right-of-way. It's the only set of zoning designations that that's permitted. When this switched to AC, it's 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 an existing nonconforming use now with the the AC zoning district would not have allowed the front landscaping to be.
Without a variance?
In a right-of-way. Correct.
Okay. Okay, so this, I guess I've got a two-part question. This kind of cleans that up. And second of all, when we approved this last year in two thousand and ten, it wasn't with the intent of creating a project or property that was in nonconformance. I mean, I I voted on it. I wasn't intending for it to be in nonconformance. So is there anything that we as a planning commission should be doing? I mean, is this a normal between IC and AC when it's rezoned?
When when zoning designations are changed on especially a large commercial project like this, the standards are different. There's 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 almost always inevitably going to be some nonconforming issues that arise as development or redevelopment occurs on the site. It it happens gradually towards the new standards of that of that new zoning designation. The planning commission may be advised to to consider that when when reviewing zone changes from industrial districts, that it does occur that landscaping could be in right-of-way, that it's not in the control of the parcel owner where where that landscaping is required.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, any further questions or discussion? Motion? Commissioner Romeo?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of LDC one, one dash zero, 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 four, five, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variance request subject to the conditions, including the change of condition two to reflect an encroachment permit, not a building permit. I can make the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Romeo. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Woosley?
Chair Wieske. I can say that. I can make the findings with the change to condition number two.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is item number three, LDC one, one dash zero, 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 four, four, YMCA Downtown Wellness Center Parking Variants. The applicants, do we have any disclosures? Okay, if the applicant will introduce himself, you'll have fifteen minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, Garrett Gordon with the Law Firm of Lewis and Roca, tonight speaking on behalf of the YMCA of the Sierra. Also with me is the President of the YMCA, Mark Lisk, who will be available for any questions. The application before. The application before you is a variance to allow the new YMCA Downtown Wellness Center to operate without off-street parking. To get your bearings, I've marked in yellow the location. To the south is the Palladio, to the west is Silver Peak. The address is 100 North Sierra Street. The location of the fitness center will be on the third floor of that building, approximately 14,000 square feet. That 14,000 square feet triggers per code a requirement of one parking space per 220 square feet, so approximately 67 spaces. We're asking for a variance for a number of reasons, and a number of reasons I believe the findings can be met. Firstly, there's no real feasible alternatives. In order to pull a building permit, the YMCA entered into a temporary lease agreement to put, for these spaces in this Silver Peak parking lot. That's costing them approximately $2,800 a month. That's approximately 28 kids who aren't able to get a, you know, kid scholarship that they provide. Secondly, this building was constructed in 1957 without off-street parking. And finally, there was a 2000, in 2000, there was a parking analysis done that identifies 11,000 spaces within three blocks. So, that said, and in addition, a free bus service going in downtown, we think there is adequate parking provided, existing in downtown, and that this YMCA is a great use to bring to downtown Reno into a location that has been vacant for quite a long time. And I know, at least in our building personally, at the Bank America Building and talking with others at what was used to be known as the Porsche Building, there's a lot of excitement, a lot of people who want to walk down there, use these facilities at lunch in the morning. So, in your staff report, there's a number of policies that I think, and specific to downtown Reno, that I think this, this application satisfies. So, I'm here for questions, as is Mr. Lisk, and as always, I'd like to thank Claudia and her staff. This issue arose kind of last minute, and as always, they were very, very accommodating and great to work with, and we appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Okay, staff?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. We've received three calls in support and one letter in opposition. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the variance. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, at this time, I will open public comment. I have one comment card before me. It is from a, and I'm sorry if I do not pronounce the name right, but Tousi Maskant, who does not wish to make a comment but is in favor of, of the project. Are there any other requests to speak forms, Robert?
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there anyone else here in the audience this evening who would like to speak on this agenda item who has not filled out a card? Hearing and seeing none, I close public comment, bring it back to the Planning Commission for questions and discussion. Mr. Halton?
Nathan, a quick question for you. I apologize, but I did not see the, the letter in opposition. Can you summarize the grounds for their opposition?
The concern, the concern was for parking, that she wanted all the required parking to be there.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I have a question for you, Nathan, on parking. In this variance, they're going to be parking across the street to the west in the parking garage, city parking garage, correct? Is that where these spots have been released or allocated from? Is that, is that the parking area that was shown?
That was shown for, there's no parking for, at this facility. It was built in 1957 without any parking.
Right, okay. But we were shown a map earlier by Garrett that showed to the west that they were going to procure parking spaces from Silver Peak. Is that in the parking garage or is that a different area?
That's the, that's the city parking garage.
Okay. Will those 67 spaces, will they interfere with any other parking agreements that any other businesses have? I mean, are we overloading the parking garage?
No, we spoke with Pete Wallace, the redevelopment agency staff person on that, who indicated that that parking garage, except for rare occasion, that he couldn't think of any particular time, has never been full.
Okay, okay. But I mean, we've got people land grabbing here. We're not grabbing the same land, are we?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
We're not grabbing the same parking spaces. I mean, we've got two or three different businesses down there looking for parking spaces in the garage. Are they grabbing the same parking spaces?
To my understanding, they're not, that they're distinct.
Thank you very much. Okay. No further questions, I will entertain a motion.
I think there needs to be a clarification whether this parking is going to continue if you grant the variance, because I don't think that was clear on the record.
Okay. Garrett, would you like to?
Sure, let me clarify, and I apologize.
For the record, please introduce yourself again.
For the record, again, Garrett Gordon. Let me clarify. Currently, there is a lease arrangement in that garage that is costing the Y $2,400 a month. I'm sorry, $2,800 a month. This variance, it will replace that agreement, so it's in lieu of that agreement. So, the lease will terminate upon approval of this variance application. We think the 11,000 other spots within the three-mile radius is sufficient. You know, some will park in that garage, others will park elsewhere, others will walk. So, but again, by approving this tonight, that agreement goes away.
Okay, thank you, Garrett. Any further questions from the commission? I will entertain a motion or discussion from the commission. Commissioner? Commissioner Newberg?
Thank you, Chair Wieski. In the case of LDC 11-0038, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I'm, my move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend the City Council do the same. Oops, sorry. Go ahead, this one. I thought it said that. Okay, LDC 11-0044, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variance request. I can make the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Newberg. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Wusley?
I'll second that, and I can make the findings.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is item number four, LDC 11-00042, St. Paul's United Methodist Solar Structure. If the applicant's representative will please come forward and introduce himself, you will have 15 minutes to discuss your project.
Yeah, I'm Mark Kaiser, representing the St. Paul's United Methodist Church.
There you go.
We're requesting a, a variance for a ground mount solar ray system. It's approximately 230 panels, and this will generate 46,000 watts. The reason we're asking for the ground mount is because the, the area here was shaded by trees, and it would reduce the efficiency of the solar system by about 30, 40%. So, there was one lady that was asking about the non-reflective glass. I believe she was one of the ladies up front. She owns two properties across the street, and non-reflective glass is not an option for solar, but it is textured, which diffuses the light, and it is black, which absorbs the light. So, we gratefully ask for the variance and for Pastor Pat, because it would greatly reduce his bill. We already have the state rebate.
Can I ask you to speak into the mic a little louder?
Oh, sorry. We already have the state rebate, and we are set to build in about, we have to be done building by September 9th.
Okay.
I'm open to questions. And Doug Olson here, can he ask anything technical? He is the electrician for the project.
Thank you very much. Staff?
Vern Claude, Senior Planner. As you know, staff is recommending approval. Some of the issues that were associated with this project, the applicant did discuss, but they were, and you received the letter, I think you got it emailed to you, and I also passed it out before the meeting. She is, she has these two parcels right here. "We believe that a majority of the concerns are addressed by the existing landscaping, the great difference between the street and where the array will be, and also there are conditions recommended to add landscaping, some more year-round evergreens into the landscaping so that there's more of a year-round, at least potential or partial screening of the structure as viewed from the south, because most of the materials are deciduous." I looked at the pictometry pictures, the street views that we have on our overheads, and it was all basically deciduous material, so adding some evergreens, you know, in there so they don't block the array, but they provide screening, and then also a fencing requirement tall enough to 42 inches, as long as it can be proven that it doesn't block the array. Staff believes that that will address a majority of the concerns. I did receive two phone calls, and again, one of them was from the lady that submitted the letter, and then another one was from a lady that lived to the west, and she had similar concerns about the landscaping and also putting the fencing there, not just to help screen it, but also to define the space so that people aren't just walking up there, right up to the solar panels and or spray painting on them or tagging them or something like that, so it would provide a little measure of security. So, with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Okay, with that, I will open public comment. I have one request to speak for him. Before I call that person up, I would like to disclose that I received a copy of the email from Becky DeNoyer, and I want, I state her name only because I placed two phone calls to her at a cell number that she left on the email, and I was not able to leave a voicemail or contact her to ask her some questions, but I made contact. Vern, I will ask you questions when it comes back to us. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I had one other thing. During the, right near the end of the review process, we discovered that a special use permit is also required to build this structure because it's a non-residential development adjacent to residentially zoned property. So, the applicant has appealed that decision of the administrator, so you may be seeing a special use permit for this also, but should this be approved, it would not be finally approved until the special use permit issue is finally resolved.
Thank you for the clarification, Vern. Okay, with that, are there any other disclosures, commissioners? Commissioner Halton?
I too did receive the email from Becky DeNoyer.
Thank you. Okay. I have a request to speak for him from Donald Pope. Don, you'll have three minutes. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Don Pope. I've been a member of this church for 25 years, and I'm in opposition, so I have to speak diplomatically, assuming I want to continue to go to church there. I have a degree in economics from a very fancy university. I taught ecology to fifth graders as my first job out of college before the word was invented, and I've been an avid recycler since before the first Earth Day, so I at least think I know a little bit about what I'm about to say. I have three comments. I don't think this is a wise project generally for use of community money. This project's costing $240,000, which comes off of the power company rebates that we all pay into for support of this kind of project, not only for churches, public schools, but also all individuals. Some people can get those and some people can't. The people who can't is everybody who doesn't get the money early. In any event, this project is designed to save the church $10,000 a year, so this project has a 24-year payback if it were going to use the church's money. In fact, the project produces twice as much power as the church needs at the present time, and that power goes back to Sierra Pacific for free, and presumably they'll sell it back to the community without rebating the rest of the community's power bills, as I assume will happen with the other projects around town like this. So, with producing twice as much power as it really needs, or as the church needs, this project really has a 12-year payback if you view the community as a whole, but I still don't think it's a good deal. Don't think we would do that with our own money if we were doing it. So, here's my other concern. This matter is presented to you without it ever having been presented meaningfully by the contractor or the church leaders to the members of the church. There's been no discussion among the members of the church as a group in any democratic way of whether this project is wise, desirable, or needed. I guess the church leaders don't have to do that. I guess the contractor doesn't have to do that. That's what we've been told. But is everybody who likes to criticize loophole lawyers are wanting to say, just because something's legal doesn't make it right? Now, I realize the last two issues that I've addressed are not issues that are within your purview, but here's one that is. I think this thing's ugly. I don't mind these things when they're on top of people's roofs. You've got to get used to what roofs look like. I suppose if we lived in caves, we'd be surprised if we saw a house. But this, thank you. This thing's massive, it's invasive, it fronts a residential street. The church, as you saw on the map that was shown to you, has property that extends across the front of three house lots. One of those belongs to the church and has the church's own house on it, so I suppose if our tenant doesn't like to look at this thing, that's his problem and ours. I think it will reduce property values. If it's allowed, it should be moved over to the side of the property, built against the back of the church, and essentially oriented vertically instead of horizontally, as you have been shown, and that might save the parking lot for the future growth that the church might have that would justify having all that power, or you might double the size of the playground for the benefit of the children who go there to the daycare. I think you ought to continue this matter until the church meets and has a meaningful discussion with itself. Thank you.
Don, thank you very much. Any other requests to speak for him, Robert?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening who would like to speak? Please come forward, introduce yourself into the, at the podium, and when you get done, please step to your left and fill out the appropriate paperwork.
Certainly, thank you.
You have three minutes.
My name is Pat Lamy. I am the pastor of St. Paul's United Methodist Church. Don is a member of my congregation, and I certainly, he has his say-so into this. I don't believe he speaks for the entire congregation. Our church doors opened in 1957. They've been open every Sunday since that time. We have a daycare center there that's licensed for 110 children, that unfortunately, the economy has affected, and we're not full at this point in time. But we feel like we are an asset to the community. The churches, like every other part of our community, has been hit by the economy, so consequently, any way that we can find way to save funds, we would like to do that. We feel like by going green with this solar project, we're not only helping the community, and I feel like as a church, we need to be the leaders in changing the fossil fuel system into better types of energy, and we feel like this is a great way to do this. So, I would respectfully ask that you approve this. There are some restrictions, and we feel like we can live and work with you on these things, so I'm open for any more questions that you might have.
Thank you, Pastor. Don't forget to fill out my paperwork, please. Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening who wishes to speak, who has not filled out a request to speak for him? Hearing and, yes, sir?
Could I speak?
Go ahead, you have three minutes. Please introduce yourself and then fill out the appropriate paperwork for me.
Yes, sir. I apologize. My name is Doug Olson. I'm from Briggs Electric. I'd be the electrician doing the final electrical installation. We did one of these systems for the Ronald McDonald House. That's exactly what it's going to look like. It'll be pointed to the south. There were some concerns about reflection of the glass, as you can see at the angle that it's at, the reflections between the sun in the winter and the summer. It varies 30 degrees, and I don't think there's going to be any problems. We did do a We did do a little diagram as to where the reflections would go. It's a pretty good guess. Everybody has a different opinion of what art is. I'm of the opinion that that's a nice-looking system. It'll provide power for the church. The money comes from Nevada Energy. They have, and it actually comes from the state. The state mandated that there be a fund set up. They collect monies from all of us. It goes into a fund that they disperse upon people asking for the money. The money comes from the public funds, or comes for public buildings and churches and schools. So that money is coming to pay for the system and we all, as energy users, pay for it, for their. The question about it making more power than the church uses, we're mandated that we cannot go more than one hundred and fifty percent than what the church uses. We cannot install a system bigger. That system actually is limited by the size of the service. So there's an electrical service for that church. It's a 200-amp service. We can't put back more than what they receive, 200 amps. I have to change that service out to bring it up to compliance because that service is so old and we'll have to redo all of that. So it's a benefit for the church that we're going to renew some of the electrical components on there. And then the last thing, the money that's for the, or the energy that is there, the one hundred and fifty percent that we're actually putting back, and we had to go before Nevada Energy and we had to pass their test, is so that they can change out from using gas for their heating and they can go to more electric heating to help defray still more of their costs.
It's fine, you have forty-five seconds.
So the whole idea is they're taking all of our money and we're trying to help out. We've done this for several other churches. We've done this for the Ronald McDonald House and we believe that it's an asset to the community and to everybody involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget to fill out my paperwork, please. Okay. Anyone else here this evening who wishes to speak under this agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, a closed public comment. Bring it back to the Planning Commission for questions. Commissioner Holton?
Commissioner Holton, thank you, Chair. A question for Vern. Vern, in your presentation, you mentioned that the applicant was going to replace some of the deciduous plants with evergreens and so forth, but I couldn't find where that was in the conditions. Is that buried in RMC 1812-1208-C1-B4 on condition six? Can you, can you just, what is the, per our code there, what is the minimum amount of screening that they do have to do? And I guess my follow-up question would be to the applicant. What do you intend to do there for screening? It wasn't quite clear to me what's going to be there visually from the street.
Condition number, condition number six, the 1812-1208-C1-F4-B4. That's in the code that says that you have to screen these types of structures as long as they don't affect the ability of it to, you know, it doesn't shade it to reduce its effectiveness. So there's a three to four-and-a-half-foot fence and the reason why I put three to four-and-a-half feet is if they can get up to four-and-a-half feet, that's what we want them to do. But if it's, it'll be placed about fifteen feet south of the edge of the array, so it potentially can't go up that tall. Condition number eight is the one that talks about the removing the dead or dying materials. Let me see. Actually, we could probably add something in condition eight that says that they should add in some evergreen. I thought I had added that in there, I apologize. But number eight would be the condition that relates to the landscape strip to the south. The intent of that was for them to maintain it and also we could add something in there to add some evergreen plant materials to provide year-round, you know, better year-round screening of that area. So I apologize for that.
No worries, thank you. Could I ask a follow-up question of the applicant? Would you care to address the concerns from Mrs. DeNoyer and volunteer to add some additional landscaping or some evergreen landscaping?
Whatever needs to be done on that issue, yeah. We don't have a problem with that. I don't think the pastor would either.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holton. Any other questions? Vern, I know you're busy writing. Hopefully, you're writing the amendment to condition number eight.
That's what I was doing.
Good. But I'm going to interrupt you. What is the area where these panels are going? What is it currently used for? I heard a discussion of parking earlier, which I didn't see it as parking.
On my site visit, it's, it has... It has an asphalt material on it, but it does not look like it is being used as parking. It's not striped for parking. All the parking is located on the east side of the site in that area over there. And then also, there's an enclosure right here which would partially block it to be used for parking. So I don't believe it is being used for parking.
Okay. Does parking count that exists? Does that meet code for the building?
I believe that it does.
I couldn't find that in my report either.
I think the answer to that question is it's because it's not being used as parking. We have a building that was built in the 50s. And so the parking that's there is the parking that's there. So it's probably non-conforming to parking.
We've all seen parking lots where some areas have been striped and some haven't and...
But again, it did not appear that it was being used as parking. When I was there, there were no cars parked in there at all. In fact, the dumpster that I mentioned in the staff report was outside of that screened area.
Right, it looks like it's hard to even drive into that parking area when you do a drive-by. I mean, if it was intended to be parking.
Again, I'm not, maybe the pastor could answer that more specifically. But I think from our perspective, if it is not being used as parking, the existing parking, if they came in to expand the use of the site, in other words, added on to the square footage of the building, added more to the school, then we would look at parking to bring that portion up to code.
So that, so that just reinforces my question. Is, do they need that area for parking based upon whatever parking was?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay, okay, that's fine. That's what I need. Okay? Do you need a couple of minutes to amend condition number eight? Will we take a quick break or are you ready?
No, I could, I could give you a sentence to add on to that.
Would you please?
Sure. What we would add to condition eight is that the applicant shall add evergreen plant materials to the landscape area, provided they do not block the effectiveness of the solar array. So we, again, we would, to the satisfaction of staff. So we would review it to make sure that we're getting a decent mix and probably what we would get is some shorter evergreen trees and some shrubs so that we, you don't want the trees growing forty feet tall in there. So we would look at it for those aspects. But that's essentially the gist of what should go into that condition. Should be added.
Commissioners, are you satisfied with that amendment? That wordage? Yes? Okay. Very good, thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion?
Chair Wieske, I have another question for the applicant. Mark? And this, this may be for the electrician or whoever is appropriate to answer this. So you explained the one hundred and fifty percent because you're allowed to build up to one hundred and fifty percent of the wordage used. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so is it, is there plans to expand this church in the future? Why, why go one hundred and fifty percent?
There's quite a few reasons, actually. Heating is a huge one. So instead of using gas to heat the whole building, instead of using that, we can set little, small oil-filled heaters in the different corners to help heat the building. So you reduce the gas bill. The water heater, if they have an electric water heater, if they have a gas-water heater, we can go to an electric water heater. So again, there's a, and there's a huge inrush of power using the water heater. So there's very strict stipulations on this from solar generations and from the state of Nevada for the feed-in tariffs. So for us to comply with all of the feed-in tariffs, but for us to make it so that we make a little profit, to be honest with you, and so that we can provide the service to the church because we're contractors, we're not going to do it for absolutely nothing. So we do make a little bit of profit on it and then that way we can put the system in and that's why it's larger than just one hundred percent. So if they have a bad year, their one hundred and fifty percent should cover that part of it. And it sort of gets a little convoluted. When you do solar electric, it's a variable source. So like this last month, we've had a very poor solar source, but it will produce some electricity. So the more clouds that we get over, the less it produces. So we may reduce it down. Then if they add the electric heating and the electric water heating and change the way they do things, they add computers or, you know, I mean, everything anymore runs off of electricity. So we're allowed to go to the one hundred and fifty percent and that's where we went.
Thank you. I think you've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay. No further questions, discussion, or a motion? Commissioner Egan?
Commissioner Egan, in the case LDC 11-00042, St. Paul's United Methodist Solar Structure, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the variance subject to conditions, including the amendments to condition number eight.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Holton?
Commissioner Holton, I second the motion.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is number five, LDC 11-00038, Southeast Neighborhood Plan Pioneer Parkway Holding Company. Will the applicant's representative please come forward and introduce herself?
Good evening. Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. I have with me tonight Ted Erkin and Gigi Chisel with Pioneer Parkway Holding Company. And the subject properties are located in the southeast neighborhood plan, north of Geiger Grade and east of South Virginia. The properties consist of 11.54 acres and the property is currently designated commercial on the plan as shown in the red. At this time, there's about seventy-five acres that are already owned by Pioneer Parkway Holding Company that are in the orange and that are in a planned unit development subject to design guidelines and standards which regulate setbacks and architectural treatment and landscaping and so forth. Pioneer Parkway recently acquired these 11.54 acres and it's their desire to add them into the existing PUD so that when these properties are developed, they all are going to be developed under the same rules at the PUD. The first step in this process is the master plan amendment, which we're before you tonight. And then subsequently, we'll have to do a follow-up zone change to change it to PUD and add it to the design guidelines. Staff is recommending approval and we're happy with that recommendation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Melissa. Staff?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the master plan amendment. Just for the record... There we go. The applicant, since the noticing, the applicant has indicated that there's been a sale of property and that in the future, this area right here would switch to Demontie Ranch. Now, it doesn't affect this application. I just want to let that be known for the record. The staff mapping system defines this as planned development area. But I just wanted to let you know that that was their intention and it would be reflected in future zone changes.
Thank you, Nathan. Okay, with that, I will open public comment. Robert, do we have any requests to speak for him?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone here in the audience this evening who wishes to speak under this agenda item who has not filled out a request to speak for him? Hearing and seeing none, a closed public comment. Bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion, questions, and/or motion. Anybody? Commissioner Holton?
Commissioner Holton. In the case of LDC 11-00038, Southeast Neighborhood Plan Pioneer Parkway Holding Company, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend the city council do the same, subject to conformance review by the regional planning agency.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Egan?
Commissioner Egan, I second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Next on the agenda this evening is item number six, LDC 11-00040, Ridgeview Retail. The applicant's representative will come forward, please.
Good evening. I'm Carrie Rohrmeier with Tectonics Design Group for the record and...
Carrie, can I, before you go any further, please, Robert, hold that clock. I apologize. At this time, I need to recuse myself. I'm going to turn it over to my vice chair. Based upon potential litigation with the applicant's representative's firm and my business firm, it's best that I recuse myself after speaking with the city attorney. So, vice chair? Please continue.
Good evening. We're here for Ridgeview Retail and staff's recommending approval of this special use permit. So the design team here is for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Vern Close, Senior Planner. As indicated in the staff report, approximately two, two, three years ago, a similar-sized building was approved on this parcel for 24-hour operations. What they're requesting is very similar to what was approved before. The bar use is an allowed use with a special use permit. There are other 24-hour operations within the center and in the vicinity and staff believes it's appropriate for the site. I received, I believe, just one informational call just asking what was going on, what they were going to put in there. And I believe it did go to the net, too. Yes, it did. So staff is recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to call for any disclosures on this. Okay, we have none. We'd like to open up for public comment at this time. Robert, do we have any requests to speak for him?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody in the crowd that would like to speak tonight? All right, hearing and seeing none. Like to close public comment. Bring it back to, for questions. If we have no questions, we can entertain a, a motion?
Vice Chair?
Yes, I would like to say LDC 11-0040, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to two conditions. I can make the findings.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second that. I can also make the findings.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Move on to case number... Yes, Chair Wieske?
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Item number seven on our agenda is LDC 11-00041, McCarran Rock Master Plan Amendment. Also, I have disclosure on this case also. The applicant's representative and my business firm have potential... The applicant's representative and my business firm have potential litigation pending, and so therefore I must recuse myself again. I will turn it over to my vice chair to finish this meeting out for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, I'd like to open LDC 11-00041, McCarran Rock Master Plan Amendment. Could I have the applicant representative, please?
Good evening. Carrie Rohrmeier for the record. We're here today on behalf of McCarran Rock Master Plan Amendment, and I just want to provide you a little bit of background information. We have... A project was presented for this site about five years ago, and due to some... It was a completely different project, I should back up, and it was a mini-storage building unit project with 707 storage units. It was unpopular, it had some flood mitigation issues at the time, so it made it to city council and was continued indefinitely. That expired during that time. Tectonics Design Group, the owner, we have been meeting with the flood control project for approximately two and a half years to come up with a refined project. We've been meeting, we've met with city council representatives, we've met with city staff to really come up with the best fit for this project site. And I know this is a master plan, and I just want to reiterate, this is only a master plan requested this time, but in an effort to have full disclosure, we've been to the NAB, we've been to the CAB, we had an open house meeting of our own, we've met with the neighbors in some personal face-to-face meetings. We wanted to present the project at this time, and then should the master plan be approved, then it's zone change, and then finally, it would be required to have a special use permit. But, so I know you're not considering a project at this point, but I want to say, out of this process, a couple of changes have come about to make the project even better. We're looking at no buildings on the site, given some flood, the critical flood designation. We are looking at permeable paving to get recharge of water. We're going to provide three acres of open flood storage area. We've met and talked to neighbors about potential lighting impacts, and these are going to be covered storage areas. This is the intent of the site, even though we are requesting a mixed residential and a single-family residential land use designation, and all lighting would be shielded under the pavilions, so these covered parking areas. We're proposing landscaping around the entire site. That came out of meeting with the neighbors, dense landscaping. And then the city would require a wall along the McCarran Boulevard boundary and then to the south. And then between that wall, there would be landscaping to buffer the residential to the south. So, we really feel like we're coming before you with a completely different project, 180 degrees for the better. We've worked with flood control, we've worked with city Reno planning and engineering staff, and really think this could be a good fit for the site. Originally, when you received your applications, you'll see it's for a mixed residential request only, and working with Vern, we've gone to mixed residential and single-family residential to even buffer any potential inconsistencies with single-family residential to the south. And with that, if you have any questions for us on the technical nature, we'll be happy to address those or any questions that might come up from the neighbors who are here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we please have staff?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. As indicated, staff is recommending approval with the modified request to mixed residential on the western approximately 250 feet, and then to single-family on the eastern, the eastern three-quarters of the property. We believe that the single-family, if you look at the zoning designations in the site...
Vern, can you please speak into the microphone?
Provide... Sorry. The single-family designation, the zoning that's allowed in that designation is a lot more consistent with the single-family to the south and also to the more rural zoning and master plan designations to the east and north. And then the mixed residential is more consistent with what is happening along McCarran Boulevard in that area. And as indicated in the staff report, that would allow higher densities and also some commercial that would be consistent with what's in that area that across McCarran. And should it get to the point where the master plan is approved and then they get into zoning, and then specific projects would require a special use permit, so all the issues related to the flooding and the lighting and those sorts of things would be addressed at that point in the process. So, at this point, obviously, we're just looking at a master plan amendment, and staff can support that. I did not receive any calls or comments, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask for any disclosures. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to open our public comment. And I do have some requests to speak for him in front of us. First would be Terry Thomas. You have three minutes to speak, and please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Terry Thomas. I represent some 60 homeowners that are located directly south of this master plan parcel request. I also represent Mr. and Mrs. Jim and Karen Watke, whose property backs up to this proposed project, and we always consider them a member of our group. We wish to publicly record our opposition to this master plan amendment. It is abundantly clear that the public, that the character of the property along McCarran on the east side of the subject parcel is devoid of any commercial property uses from Miraloma all the way to the river. With the exception of the Manke parcel annexation into the city of Reno, which we opposed, and the parcel representing the city of Reno's Miraloma Park, properties on the east side of McCarran are all in the unincorporated areas of the county, and we, along with residents of Southern Valley, have fought attempts by the city of Reno to annex us in the past. This incursion into the unincorporated area by Mr. Manke, we view as a thinly veiled attempt to shield his plans from legitimate neighborhood concerns. Just take a look at page nine of the staff report. I took the liberty of highlighting the city limit line your own planner provided. What is wrong with this picture? Why did Mr. Manke seek annexation into the city? Perhaps because we, as unincorporated landowners, have no representation on the city of Reno council. Okay, but please don't tell me we don't have a say. Mr. Manke's attempts to develop this property back in 2006 were properly denied by your planning council or commission, and were subsequently denied by default in the hands of the Reno City Council. It's evident from the comments of both the NAB and the CAB, both of which meetings I attended, who considered this latest proposal, that a majority have grave concerns about the master plan amendment request, although the conceptual representation of an open-air storage facility is considerably more demure than what he proposed in 2006. The master plan amendment leaves more doors open than it closes. And that is very bad news for those of us who are squarely in the path of the next flooding event. Current city ordinance require only a one-to-one flood mitigation, which leaves us no worse, but no better than the floodwater inundation that filled our homes in 1997. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, can we have Karen Watke, please? You all have three minutes, and please state your name.
My name is Karen Watke. I live at 4775 Pembroke, right next to the adjacent property we're in question. We went through the flood, and we know what goes on over there. It's open, it's always been park and recreation land. Water runs free through there. It causes no problem. It was a golf range, no problem. Now, if he wants to build homes in there, and he wants to put the storage buildings in there, and not maybe blacktopa, but put surface stones, where does the water go? It rushes over to us, even though he puts a big wall in, it's a very bad place. I'm sorry, this is flood plain next to the university fields, and it should not be developed into what he wants to develop. That's my problem, and I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Jim Watke, please? And the same for you, three minutes, and please state your name.
My name is... My name is Jim Watke. I'm of the half. We've lived on this property out there now for 47 years, before McCarran or any of them were in there. And unfortunately, 97, we went through the flood, which was not enjoyable, and I hope no new people ever experience it. Bill Manke is a businessman, and he's trying to develop anything he can for his immigrant storages, which he has quite a few around town. We've known Mr. Manke for years, but what they're going to do over there, if they put a gravel base down on that there, there's no protection for any of the, all the oil, the diesel fuels, or whatever else are in the vehicles on that property, we're going to soak right into the ground. Even if they try to put in pipes or anything like that to say to, like a diversionary thing like that, it would be, it would be a waste of time because whatever is on there is going to soak right straight into the ground. We do not want the place there. It's nice, the thing it is now, and like I say, university's on the north side, city Reno's on the east side, and then counties on the south side. And there's only three parcels of ground on there, and since 97 or as long as we've lived out there, we have been told through lines and stuff like that, that the McCarran and Pembroke were the flood line, flood plain for that whole area out there, back on the university and et cetera, was going to be set aside basically for flood plain. Well, they've bought all the property along Mill Street in there for the flood plain, and there's three pieces of property where we live there, and that's all in this, and that's the end of it. I mean, that would be either like the city of Reno, Sea of Parks property, if they bought that property in there, then that would take, take care of that whole corner from there, clear down to the sewer plant and everything like that, there would be absolutely no residential, no property, no houses, no nothing in there, and this would all be over and done with. But to take that little area there that Bill wants, I mean, he don't, I don't know, I won't go into that, but somewhere or another, he'll finagle something in there. It was just little niddle, piddle here and there and what have you. But I hope to God that you don't wreck that in there, because we're going to have to sit in our kitchen and look at that place out there. Now, it's enjoyable to look out there because there's deer and stuff out there, and it makes it rather nice. But the ground, no matter what, if he puts anything on it, all the oils, diesel fuels or anything like that is going to go right in the ground, and the people out there can change their oil and dump it, move a rock over, dump their oil down in there and everything else. And the water table out there is very shallow. I mean, I dipped the top of my well off, and you can see the water right there. So, whatever is dumped in there is going to have some effect on our stuff. I hope you people can sympathize with us, living there and having this in our backyard, because I don't think you'd want it in your backyard either. So, thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And the last request to speak for him, Kid Rohrmeier. Please come to the podium, please. Please state your name for the record.
Kim Rohrmeier. I'm here to talk about this project because it's of particular importance to me. This is kind of awkward because you're looking from the west to the east. This is north. This is south. So, I'm going to turn this a little bit. Everything that, everything that was in the blue was flood inundation boundaries in 1997. Everything that's in the yellow crosshatch is designated to be storage for the flood project. This project, the project that they're planning there, is right in the middle of where they're planning on storing the water. Some of the information that we have gotten is that they're going to be, this is all going to be open, that it's going to be flat, it's going to be paved. It could be a permeated paving that water absorbs in, but it is technically allowed... One of the things that they mentioned that it might be paved where water can go through it. Our concern is, is that they, my concern, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. My concern is that they have plans, that they're supposed to have some kind of evacuation plan for their, the people who store their boats and RVs there, they're going to have some kind of evacuation plan in the event of a flood event. And the map that they showed, there's one way in and one way out of their project. Here's my major concern, is there's one way in and one way out for the people on Pembroke, especially this group that lives over here in the east side subdivision. They don't have but one access point, and that's right off of Pembroke, not probably 90 yards from McCarran. They're going to have to try and get their belongings, their livestock, their families out during a flood event. And meanwhile, back at the ranch, these guys are going to be trying to get their RVs, their boats, and everything else out in the same manner, in almost not probably 100 feet from each other. They're going to be all, everybody's going to be trying to get out of there at the same time. The huge concern that I have about this whole thing is that it's in the middle of the flood project, and it's in the middle of where they're designated flood storage. My, my problem with this is that since 1997, and all the development has been done around that area, especially across the street, the FedEx, all that stuff, they don't know how that's going to impact these poor people over here in the east side subdivision on flooding. They have no idea. They can't tell you they can, because even the flood project at this time can't model it. So, they don't know what all the development that around their places has had is going to impact their flooding. It could be worse significantly than it was in 97. To add this additional project and to approve having this change from open space to amending the master plan for this could significantly impact the surrounding residents, and I don't think it should be approved.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the crowd that would like to speak on this matter? All right, hearing and seeing none, I'd like to close public comment. I'd like to bring it back to the board for questions. Commissioner Newberg, sorry.
Thank you, Vice Chair Whusley. Vern? This is, it's a master plan amendment to change it from unincorporated transition to 5.4 acres units per acre and 10.23 parks of recreation open space to 3.9 acres of mixed residential, right?
Yes.
And it's, and then it's 2.13 of single-family residential?
Correct.
So, where's the... I'm not, I, where's this, where's the storage on here? Did you see anything? I didn't see anything about a storage lot or boats and...
No, this, this is just a master plan amendment. What the master plan would do would, based on the master plan designation, should it be approved, would allow certain conforming zoning districts, and then they would have to come in and request that zoning. And then if that is approved, then they would have to do a special use permit, depending on the use, like an RV, an RV storage or RV mini-storage would require a special use permit, any type of commercial development would require a special use permit, any type of for-sale housing would require a tentative map, and potentially any type, not any type, but apartments over a certain number would require a special use permit due to the number.
Correct.
So, at this point, we're just looking at the master plan.
It's just a land use only.
Correct.
We're not talking about putting gravel on there or knocking down the building that's there or...
That's just what the applicant has represented they intend to do, but until all those other steps are followed through on, and we get to a special use permit or tentative map process, then the specifics of that would be discussed at that time.
And then at that point, then, it would come back to both, well, it'd come back to the Planning Commission at that time, correct?
The zoning would come back to both you and the planning, the council, and any special use permits or tentative maps would come to you, and if they were appealed, they would go to the city council.
Okay. That's, that's what I thought. Now, in, I know that the area over there is flood issue, and I remember the 97 floods and the 2003 floods, but we're just talking about a piece of paper that we're going to change the language of what the land is for, correct?
We are considering changing a land use designation, which can allow more intensive, potentially more intensive uses on the property than what is currently allowed.
Yeah, correct, but I mean, it's saying to single-family residential and to mixed residential.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks. I just needed to get that clarified.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Coffin?
Vern? If we change this to mixed residential, is a...
If we change this to mixed residential, is a possibility apartments could be built on those condos?
It, it depends on what zoning gets approved there, but several of the zoning districts that are conforming to the mixed residential could potentially allow apartments or condominiums.
For your consideration, because you're recommending approval of this, what consideration did you take in for the flooding?
Well, our initial reaction was not to support it, but we discussed this with engineering staff, who has also been in contact with the flood control project folks, and we know what the western portion of the site for mixed residential is in a lesser flood pla, I think it's the shaded X, but engineering can specifically tell you about that if you want to hear that from them, but the, the portion proposed for mixed residential is in a lesser portion. The other three-quarters of the site is in the hundred-year flood plain, so they would have to mitigate, if anything gets built in there, they're going to have to mitigate it per the ordinance. And again, we were initially concerned with that, but the technical aspects of it, I'll leave to Mr. Gall to describe what they considered when they made their recommendation to us.
Yeah. For the record, Bill Gall, senior civil engineer. Yeah, we reviewed this as well as our public works department and discussed it with flood control people as well. As Vern mentioned, the, the western quarter of the site against McCarran is in what's considered a five-hundred-year flood plain, or the, the point-two-percent chance. It's low-lying flood and stuff, so a more intense, you know, designation would be, you know, allowable on that western edge along McCarran. On the eastern edge, the eastern side of it, it is within the hundred-year flood zone, and it is in the critical flood zone as well. We have cross-section data, and we know what the flood elevations are of the ninety-seven flood. And we have, you know, recently adopted the critical flood zone ordinances that provide for the necessary mitigation requirements for any development that is done in this area. So, any of these new developments that come in here, anything they do, you know, shove, you know, you know, if they bring a shovel in, they're going to take a shovel out. If they can't do it adjacent to their site and mitigate there, they have to go do it in other areas and provide necessary modeling that gets approved through us as well. So, we felt like there was ample, you know, teeth there for any future development that come in to monitor and to, to analyze, you know, what development came in to ensure that there wouldn't increase or, or have any adverse impact on flooding.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rubio.
Yeah, don't, don't go away. Hey, I'm, I'm going to ask you a question. The mitigation ratio in nineteen ninety-seven was one-to-one. The mitigation ratio in 2011 is?
The mitigation ratio in 2011 is a minimum of one-to-one, if it's, if it's within the exact same flood pool.
Who has a?
If it's outside of that flood pool, it has to be a minimum of one-to-one, plus, plus show on the model that there's no adverse impact.
And has the flood, the working committee that's been in existence for approximately ten years now, have they had a look at this and offered any recommendations?
Um, yes, I've, I've actually spoke with Paul Urban and, you know, and from the flood project, and he's looked at their proposed project as well, as just general discussions with it, that there are areas that are available for mitigation for this, and that if they do in development and they add, add areas, that they could come in and they could show within the modeling potential mitigations for it, and that there are, you know, there are mitigations for what, what could be done, so. But again, without a specific project and, you know, greater detail, we can't tell you exactly.
Thank you. Okay. Like to bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'd like to discuss it and just kind of throw out. I remember in two thousand, ninety-seven, I remember in, in 2003, when that area flooded. I remember a planned, uh, storage facility that was supposed to go out there, that I believe was approved by the city council after the 2003. You know, I, I've got concern for the flood, because I remember how much water was out there, but at the same point, we don't have a project to, to base this on, and to, to base the opinion on, yeah, we have to have some kind of mitigation. So, we, we don't have a project that we can, they might say that they're going to do this right now, but they don't have any plans in concrete or cement or anything like that, so. As a land use, the area has changed. I can make the findings, you know, it's like, I would prefer, subjectively, to not make them, but I can make the findings.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Romeo.
That area is very dear to me. I was here in 2006, and I also remember the flood of ninety-seven and the flood of '03. I remember and still recall the work that's being done by the committee for flood control work. That area is not, not open to opinion. When we're looking at findings on that area, when you're looking at a finding that says facilities can be provided to accommodate the proposed densities, which is on number four, that is a finding that we have to make to approve this. And based on the flooding in nineteen ninety-seven, based on the flooding in '03, we have not been presented with any evidence whatsoever from either the working group or from any technical entity that can say development can go on there without affecting, A, the properties to the north, and more specifically, the properties to the south, that I get repeated calls on, repeated, repeated calls, it's raining, the water's up to, up to my street, it's up to my curb, is, is the drains being cleaned. That is a catastrophe waiting to happen out there. The one-to-one ratio doesn't work. We've got historical proof here in the city of Reno and in Washoe County, that historically that mitigation is poor, yet that is still not, not cemented. And the last time I recall, the flood, flood control committee, you know, working group, they were looking at a two or possibly a two-point-five-to-one, so it doesn't affect anyone to the south. I think the Ward Three NAB, who is intimately involved in this, opposes development in, in that area. That has been promised and talked about by several city councils and several different appointed or different elected officials that relate to the hundred-year flood plain and the critical flood plain. The development should not be in there. We have seen nothing, in my mind, to change the conditions or change the situation that existed on November sixteenth of 2006. I will not support this in any way, shape, or form. I cannot make the findings, regardless of what its land use, regardless of the fact that there is or isn't a project in front of us. Based on what I have to make today, I cannot make them. I couldn't make them in '06, and I seriously doubt that in that area, until we get definitive rules back from working groups, that we'll not be able to make an intelligent decision on that property.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the commissioners? Commissioner Kaufman.
I was also here in 2006 when we voted on this, but it was a specific project. What we saw, this is not, this is a designation, so I can make the findings to support the change.
Thank you. Commissioner Halt.
Mr. Vice Chair. You know, I was not here voting in 2006 on this, so I have to admit, I'm giving a lot of weight to the words I hear from my fellow commissioners who were here, who have been through this process, who have stood in the water. My initial reaction was, was the same as, you know, some of the other commissioners here, in the sense that I'm having a hard time making the considerations one and number four as well, and I'm not convinced that we've got the facilities to accommodate the proposed change to the master plan.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Well, I'd just like to end the discussion by saying I, I as well came in very concerned and about this project. Definitely wanted to hear what staff had to say, and I, I believe for the master plan amendment, and this is land use only, I believe my questions have been answered, and I can make the findings and can support this project at this time, but only for, for what's in front of me. All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Newburg.
Yeah, for LDC 1100041, McCarran Rock, master plan amendment. Based upon compliance with the applicable finding, considerations, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend city council to do the same subject to conformance review by the regional planning commission.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, and I'll second that, and I can make the findings.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was Commissioner Kaufman, Commissioner Egan, Commissioner Newburg, and Commissioner Woosley, all signify by saying aye. All those opposed, signify by saying nay.
And this is Commissioner Romeo, I say nay.
Nay. Commissioner Halt.
Two nays for the record.
Read the.
All right. Any action taken by the planning commission on a tentative map, special use permanent variance, or skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by this decision may file an appeal. Each person, entity may make his or hers own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within ten days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the planning commission recommendation.
Just, just for the record, do, do the people out there understand what the vote meant?
The vote meant that the project, the, the recommendation to approve will be sent to city council. Generally, it requires a two-third vote of the commission, because Commissioner Wieske is disqualified. There are six of you, so two-thirds of six are four, and four of you voted for it.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to, at this time, I'd like to close public hearings. All right, on to the next. The next, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Do we have any report on that? Okay, moving on to staff announcements.
Oh, wait, we haven't had a meeting. Sorry. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to staff reports. Announcements, sorry.
Once again, Claudia Hansen, planning and engineering manager. I think to kind of summarize all of the staff announcements, you've probably heard that there was a reduction in force at the city of Reno, too. We, we were one of the casualties, we lost two planners in the reduction in force, so we were down to, in current planning, you saw the staff here tonight, it'll be Vern, Nathan, and myself, and then we have doing permit review in front counter Jerry Bowden and Daniela Montero, and that is the remaining planning staff. And so, as a result of that, most text amendments, master plan amendments, and other long-range planning projects are on hold until we have available time to work on those. So, you've had some projects that you've asked us to work on and look into, those will all be delayed, and we will get to them as we have time. So, please be patient with us, and we will do our best.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners suggestions for future done items. Do we have any? Okay, moving on, like to adjourn this meeting.